Okay, we all rise for the prayer. I'm gonna ask that Councilman Reyno lead us with the prayer at this time.
Thank you. Let us bow our heads and remember that we're in the presence of the Lord. Lord God, Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for all of the blessings that you have given us in each and every one of our lives. We ask that you give us the wisdom to do what needs to be done to move our city forward. We ask this in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. Councilman Stagney, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Chair.
The chair of the City Council members Brannigan and Black are absent this evening.
And I would like to mention to the public that Councilwoman Brannigan and Councilwoman Black are in Washington to see you at this time on a trip. Thank you.
Yes, sir. In accordance with Council Resolution Number Z1450, please be advised that all cellular telephones, pagers, beepers, and other devices of this nature must be deactivated or silenced throughout the council meeting. Under the consent agenda this evening, we have Item 1, approval of minutes, the regular council meeting of February 6, 2014. Item 2 is approval of alcoholic beverage permit applications. Item 2A is a resolution granting an alcoholic beverage permit to the Friends of Rivertown on Monday, March 3, 2014, at 4:15 Williams Boulevard, being property owned by the City of Kenner in Kenner, Louisiana. Item 3 is approval of bingo and public gathering applications. Item 3A is application number 1796/14, the City of Kenner to hold a public gathering for the purpose of Lundigrav 2014 on March 3, 2014, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. in the 400 block of Williams Boulevard in Kenner, Louisiana. Item 4 is correspondence reports from the mayor, CIO, or department heads. Item 5 is acceptance and rejection of bids requiring an expenditure of less than $5,000. Item 5A is a resolution accepting the responsive bid received from House of Doors Incorporated due in business as Dial One House of Doors in the amount of $3,019 for the purchase of four doors for the Butch Dewey and Lincoln Manor gymnasiums in accordance with telephone bid number T14-2133 for the Department of Parks and Recreation. Item 5B is a resolution approving the purchase of two sets of bunker gear in the amount of $3,343 from Casco Industries Incorporated, an authorized dealer of global manufacturing company LLC, for the Kenner Fire Department. Item 5C is a resolution accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Business Forms Incorporated in the amount of $2,950 to supply 44,000 inspection registration forms as per specifications in telephone bid number T14-2130 for the City of Kenner Motor Vehicle Inspection Station of the Department of Inspections and Code Enforcement. Item 6 is change orders requiring an expenditure of less than $5,000. We have none. Item 7 is acceptance of committee findings for final passage. We have none. Item 8 is re-subdivision ordinances for final passage. We have none.
Motion.
Under the public appearance agenda this evening, we have Item 9, public hearings for final passage. Item 9A is a public hearing regarding summary ordinance number 11,657, an ordinance approving the lease of a certain portion of ground fronting Veterans Boulevard and measuring 100 feet by 43 feet adjacent to lots Y9C, Y9D, square 329, and 330, Highway Park Subdivision, Kenner, Jefferson Parish, Louisiana, which said property is owned by the City of Kenner.
Okay, I need a motion to put public hearing ordinance number 11,657 on the floor at this time. Motion by Councilman Stagney, second by Councilwoman Maria DeFrances. All vote.
Mr. Chairman, motion passes 5-0.
Okay, we're now in a public hearing on summary ordinance number 11,657. I think we have a presentation by Mr. Jay Abaria.
Yes, sir.
Planting Department.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Council President. The subject consists of a 4,300-square-foot portion of public right-of-way measuring 100 feet in length by 43 feet in width. The right-of-way fronts the south side of Veterans Memorial Boulevard bounded by Indiana Avenue to the east and Idaho Avenue to the west located in Council District 2. The right-of-way is currently improved and used as a portion of the off-street parking area for the Chez Pierre French Bakery located on lot Y9C and for the future use of lot Y9D. The right-of-way is located along a portion of the Veterans Memorial Boulevard corridor that's zoned general commercial and consists primarily of general commercial uses. Ordinance 10,00599 was adopted by the City Council on June 6, 2013, which authorizes the mayor to enter into lease agreements for the use of Veterans Memorial Boulevard right-of-way by adjacent property owners. In accordance with ordinance 10,00599, the owner of lots Y9C and Y9D is requesting to lease a portion of adjacent right-of-way from the city in order to accommodate the minimum off-street parking requirements for the businesses located on the two lots. While the utilities are located within the right-of-way, letters of no objection to the lease of the right-of-way have been received from all utility companies, although they do not waive their right to access and repair these facilities. If such repairs and excavations were to occur, resurfacing of the parking area would be at the owner's expense, and we've covered this in the ordinance as well as the lease agreement. The city obtained the appraisal services of Gale Buduske and Associates to establish the fair rental value for both the north and south sides of the unused portions of Veterans Memorial Boulevard right-of-way extending from the Kenner-Jefferson Parish corporate limit westward to Williams Boulevard. The appraisal of the right-of-way dated December 10, 2013 places the annual fair market rent value of the property at $1.73 per square foot. Based on the total area of the subject right-of-way, which is 4,300 square feet, the annual rent value for the applicant is established at $7,439. The applicant is acceptable to the annual fair rent value. Therefore, the Planting Department and Planting Commission both recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Abaria. At this time, I'd like to ask anybody from the public if they have any comments to make on this public hearing summary ordinance number 11,657. Seeing no further discussion from the audience, I have a motion to close by Councilman Stagney, second by Councilwoman Maria DeFrances.
Mr. Chairman, motion passes 4-0. Councilmember Carroll did not vote.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor on summary ordinance number 11,657 by Councilman Stagney, second by Councilwoman DeFrances. Councilman Stagney, you have the floor at this time.
Okay, I'm on. Thank you, Mr. President. This is a result of some legislation the City Attorney's Office came up with several years ago. Prior to that, being elected in 2006 and going into '07, we wanted to figure out a way to maybe lease some right-of-way along Veterans Boulevard similar to what Jefferson Parish does in SCZO and dedicate that money towards future improvements. And this is, I think, the first piece that we are actually doing since I advocated it. The mayor's Economic Development Committee has advocated doing the same thing, and it's worked well in Jefferson Parish. I just have a couple of quick questions. In the lease agreement itself, does it dedicate the money anywhere? Let me ask Mr. Abaria if you don't mind, Mr. City Attorney. Okay.
It dedicates it to the beautification of the medians along Veterans Boulevard.
Does it describe the location? Normally, that money through prior legislation would go back to a capital account, but I think everybody up here, the administration, has agreed that when we're going to lease this property, that we want to make sure that that money that's derived is dedicated for maintenance and upkeep of the Veterans Boulevard median. Is the language that tight in the lease agreement, dedicated towards Veterans Boulevard in the immediate vicinity?
I believe it's that tight. I'll go back and look again. If it's not, we can certainly tighten it.
Okay. No, this is good legislation. Let's hope the administration and future negotiations can get these types of agreements along Veterans Boulevard, and we'll take some resources instead of the government paying for it. These businesses who benefit from that will pay for it, and they'll pay for that beautification on Veterans. So I'd ask for your support. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman DeFrances, you have the floor.
Thank you. Mr. Abaria, just two quick questions. I already know the answer, but I want to put it before the public. Could you let them know the length that this lease will be in effect, please?
Yes, not to extend five years.
Okay, so we could renew it, but it only lasts for five years. I just want to make everyone comfortable with that. And the second question I had, someone else brought up, and again, we know the answer, but we would like you just to publicly state it. They can't build anything on it other than just resurface the area to make it usable, correct?
That's correct. It goes towards requirements for off-street parking and for landscaping.
We just wanted to put that publicly on the record for people to feel more comfortable about what we're doing. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilwoman DeFrances. Just want to make, you know, this is a great way that you have reoccurring revenues to actually beautify, you know, the Veterans Corridor. And of course, obviously, you know, this is done throughout Veterans Highway and Jefferson Parish, and it's sad that just this one parcel is now taking advantage of this, and hopefully in the future, more and more will take advantage of it because, let's face it, back prior when a lot of those buildings were built, first of all, Veterans wasn't as busy, and secondly, Veterans didn't take up that much space at the time. So basically, some of these, this area can be used exactly to benefit the businesses. You, as the citizens, get a lease basis off of it, and I think this is a great piece of legislation. And Joe, like I, once again, I hope all that corridor that's in your district, you know, one signs up for this because it's gonna be great for the, you know, just the replanning and the beautification of Veterans in that area. Thank you. Okay, I ask for a vote at this time?
Mr. Chairman, motion passes 5-0. Item 9B is a public hearing regarding Resolution Number B16454, a resolution authorizing the City Council for the City of Kenner to hold a public hearing to determine whether or not the building located at 1701 Roosevelt Boulevard, Kenner, Louisiana should not be repaired or demolished.
Okay, motion by Councilman Stagney, second by Councilman Carroll to put on the floor. Please vote.
Mr. Chairman, motion passes 5-0.
Okay, we are now in a public hearing. Do we have a presentation by code this time?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Amy. Go right ahead. I didn't see the notes on it, that's why I was looking down.
All right. Let's make sure. I'm on. Okay. The structure in question is a raised house on pilasters bearing the municipal address of 1701 Roosevelt Boulevard. The property is owned by Ms. Betty Pagregan. On July 10, 2013, we sent a legal summons via certified mail to Mrs. Pagregan in September of 2013. She applied with the New Orleans Demolition Services to have the structure demolished. We have received all of the utility disconnects and are waiting on a plumber to cap the sewer in order for the department to issue the demolition permit. We have been in contact with the New Orleans Demolition Services about the issue, and they are having trouble obtaining a plumber to do so. Ms. Pagregan was sent a notice to appear before this council on the 24th day of January 2014 by certified mail for which she signed. It is noted by the report of the engineer retained by the City of Kenner who provided the following reasons of inadequate maintenance, dilapidation, and abandonment. Reminiscences of fallen trees are scattered throughout the front yard. All doors and windows are not boarded up. Evidence of foundation issues in the structure. Cracks are occurring in the brick facade on the north side of the structure. Numerous areas of soffit and fascia are rotten and falling off the building. Shingles are missing along portions of the front of the structure, thus causing the roof sheathing to rot. The underside of the raised structure is open, allowing access to feral animals and varmints. Based upon the report of the engineer, the structure is a public hazard and recommends that the city takes the steps necessary to declare it a public nuisance and have it abated by demolition or brought up to the current city codes and ordinances. And as an additional note, I passed by 1701 Roosevelt this afternoon, and it does look like they are in the process. And in fact, we spoke with a representative of the New Orleans Demolition Services, and we should have the plumbing permit if it...
Okay, at this time, are you done, Amy?
Yes, we're done.
Okay. All right. At this time, is there anybody here representing the property located at 1701 Roosevelt Boulevard? Ma'am, would you please come to the mic up front here, please, and state your name and address for the record, please?
And I live at 299 Carr Drive in Slidell, Louisiana.
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead and make your presentation.
Okay, I've been trying to get this property demolished since September. I have all copies here of my email, a copy of my contract, a copy of my canceled check, and I've been in constant contact with Dana. She can tell you, we've had a dialogue ever since this started. I don't know what to tell you. I've been pulling my hair out trying to get it done. They claimed that they sent a plumber out today and that it's supposed to be capped today. They said, once they get it capped and they get the permit, they can demolish it the next day.
The name of the company that you're using?
New Orleans Demolition.
Okay, have they filed for a permit with the city at this time, Dana?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna turn this over to Joe for questioning since it's in his district.
Thank you, Mr. President. We can close out public hearing, and I can make a few statements. This has been going on for quite a while, and I just want to follow through with what's been happening. Ms. Betty has tried. I was under the assumption Ms. Betty had delayed this. A neighbor talked to Ms. Betty, and Ms. Betty said, oh, the City of Kenner had a problem, and the only thing left to do was do the sewage disconnect, and that's been some time. But it hasn't been Ms. Betty's fault, it's been the general contractor's fault. But I still would like to go through and pass the legislation. The structure will be demolished before the legislation goes into place, but I think it's important that we keep the contractor accountable. And I haven't seen the emails, Ms. Betty, but Ms. Amy, and I think Dana may have told me that they have been going back and forth with you, and for whatever reason, whoever the plumber is that works for that general contractor did not complete his task or her task. So what we're gonna do today is close the public hearing. I'm gonna make a motion to repair, demolish the property in a time allotted by law that's somewhere around 45 days. I don't remember the...
It's 17 days.
17 days before the legislation becomes active. So you'll have it down well before that. I had already checked with Entergy...
Yeah, I did all of that. I did the gas, I did the water, I did the electricity, I did all of that.
Well, for whatever reason, it was the sewage disconnect that created the problem or the delay, and then there was some miscommunication in between. So it's been quite a while, and as you know, they haven't had electricity to the property since '08. So I'm just gonna go ahead and make a motion to close public hearing, and then we'll go from there.
And Betty, you can stay there at this time. Motion by Councilman Stagney, second by Councilwoman Gregory Carroll to close public hearing at this time. Please vote.
Mr. Chairman, motion passes 5-0.
Okay, at this time, 9B is on the floor. Councilman Stagney?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to go ahead and make a motion that we pass the legislation and ask that the property be repaired or demolished in a time allotted by law.
One question, Joe. Do you understand, Ms. Betty, what's going on at this time?
I don't know what the timeline is right now. I don't understand the timeline.
What I'm doing by passing this is putting some pressure on your contractor to complete what he should have done for you last August or September. I think you first signed your contract with him in August. September, Entergy gave their disconnect, and I think almost everybody else, and then for some reason, you know, it's gone this long, and the only thing left was a sewage disconnect, and it was through no fault of yours, but your contractor...
My contract calls for the contractor to do the sewer disconnect.
Right.
I was not responsible for that part of it.
We had started to take steps to try to disconnect it ourselves, but we felt like this was a better avenue to put pressure on your contractor to get it done. And I think that there are some issues if indeed the contractor does not fulfill their obligation under your contract. But it's important to me at this time to pass the legislation and have that in place. You know, we've done that several times before, and in most instances where somebody like yourself has already had a contract in place, it's usually demoed before the legislation even becomes effective.
Well, I expected it to be done like by October.
Right.
You know, because like I said, I signed that contract sometime in September, and that was after a lot of negotiations and bids from, you know, different contractors. So...
Okay. Well, we thank you for coming out tonight, and we're gonna try to go ahead and pass this, and hopefully that'll be enough to get your contractor moving.
Will I receive anything in the mail to confirm this, or what?
If code or I can have my assistance, she won't be back till Monday, but we'll mail you a copy of the legislation. But again, it won't go into effect for quite some time.
It'll go into effect March 7. We just did the calculation.
Okay, March 7.
Okay.
So I'm certain, because they were out there today, I got calls from several neighbors saying that they were out there today, so I assume they finally got the plumber out there to do the sewer disconnect. Can code confirm that? Ms. Vallow, didn't you say you went out there as well?
Yes, sir. I drive by there every day.
Yeah.
So I'll make certain to keep an eye on the property. And if necessary, I can contact you personally.
Okay. And you are?
I'm Amy Vallow. I'm the code director.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Betty. Thank you, Madam President. I mean, Mr. President.
I kinda like this job. I think we have a couple of people that still want to speak on this. Timothy Shaw, are you here? Oh, that's right, you got the name wrong.
Oh, yeah. I can see that, right?
Councilwoman DeFrances, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President. This particular property owner seems to be doing everything she can, and so I was wondering if this is possible, if our co-director could notify perhaps Councilman Stagney's office if the contractor doesn't do what he's supposed to do and doesn't follow through, if perhaps you could let us know in time and notify Councilman Stagney, and he could let the rest of the council know. Because obviously, she's doing everything she can, and we're trying to do what we can through Councilman Stagney to put pressure on the contractor, but if he doesn't follow through, I think we need to be aware of that.
Absolutely. Absolutely. I've been in contact with the councilmen already with regard to this matter, and I have no problem, and even keeping the property owner informed as well, as long as we can keep the contractor's feet to the fire. And we did speak with them this afternoon, and they said that it would be done within the next two weeks. The issue was licensing on the plumber's side.
And knowing that already, you know, this council has passed this resolution and letting him know of that, and that we're gonna be on top, you know, staying on top of him to make sure he follows through, and that you're going to notify us if he doesn't, maybe that can add some additional pressure to it.
Absolutely. And we have been in contact with that company for quite some time, trying to push them forward with regard to that.
Thank you very much.
Right, and so the public understands plumbing is just not water, it's the gas as well they have to disconnect. Is that correct?
Correct.
So, you know, we definitely want all that disconnected correctly provided to the machinery coming in. So, Councilman Stagney, would you like to close at this time? Okay. Your motion on the floor now, Joe, is...
We can have the mouse and pen.
Okay. Councilmen, please vote.
Motion passes 5-0. Item 10 is opening of bids. We have none. Item 11 is reclassification of zoning for final passage. We have none. Item 12 is other ordinances for final passage. We have none. Item 13 is resolutions and motions by councilmembers. Item 13A is a resolution requesting that the administration through the Department of Public Works use batched dirt for filling the median of Roosevelt Boulevard to maintain the improvements and repairs to the median.
Motion by Councilman Stagney, second by Councilman Reyno. Councilman Stagney, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Several years ago, District 2 paid for some beautification along Roosevelt Boulevard between West Napoleon and West Mattery, as well as 21st Street between Roosevelt and Williams. And while it's been aesthetically pleasing, those trees have sucked up a lot of water, and there has been a significant amount of soil subsidence, coupled with the fact that we've done some paths to progress, street work in that area, especially along Roosevelt Boulevard where they repaired street panels and curbing, there's a lack of fill on the median to reinforce the curbing, and it's an unpleasing look, and we need to try to fill it. I spoke to somebody in Public Works, and I don't remember if it was Mr. Dillonkoff or Mr. Dennis. My goodness, it might have been around the Christmas holidays or just after Christmas. And two things were gonna be done. We were gonna try to raise the canopy of the trees. Your department, I think, has already done that along Roosevelt Boulevard. We need to try to get the fill put in that median, and I would ask for your support. On a side note, I'd like to also say, and I don't have to take the mic again, where they've done, Mr. Gonzalez, where they've done the second round of those panels on Roosevelt Boulevard, if you could contact Mr. Rick, let him know that, I don't know if they tried to put the yellow striping down too soon, but everywhere that they have a new street panel, the yellow striping is already up. So something happened, they did something improper, or the paint was improper. Something's wrong because on all the other street panels that were done in the first round, that striping is still in place. But I'd ask for your support on the fill for the median along Roosevelt Boulevard. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. All vote.
Mr. Chairman, motion passes 5-0. Item 14 is items removed from the consent agenda. We have none. Item 15 is acceptance of contracts and similar matters approved by the mayor. Item 15A is summary ordinance number 11,658, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of 1,000 Dare t-shirts at a cost of $6,625 from Creative Product Sourcing Incorporated, the sole source provider for the Kenner Police Department.
Got a motion by Councilman Reyno, second by Councilman Donnapolis. Seeing no discussion, all vote. Lock in the vote, please.
Mr. Chairman, motion passes 5-0. Item 15B is a resolution approving change order number 1, final, to the contract with BLD Services LLC in the additive amount of $11,111.38 for a total contract amount of 1,000, I mean, $1,140,001.38, and accepting the project as complete for the Vintage and Meadock Forest Main Project, sealed bid number 12-6104.
A motion by Councilwoman DeFrances, second by Councilman Donnapolis. Seeing no further discussion... Oh, Councilwoman DeFrances? Okay, didn't see you in there.
Thank you, Council President.
The other floor.
I just want to first say, this is not a typical change order. We're going to explain to the people of this area, of the City of Kenner, why we had to make this change. Mr. Gonzalez, could you please give them some of the information? You and I have discussed this at length. If you could please tell the viewing public and the people here tonight why we had to put this change order in place and why we chose to do it this way, please?
Absolutely. This additional cause was primarily caused because we intentionally eliminated the asphalt work under the Path to Progress program from the lift station on Vintage all the way to Chateau Magdalene. This was intentionally deleted from the Path to Progress program due to the fact that the Forest Main Project had not started and would not start for several months. So the last thing we wanted to do is proceed with the asphalt improvements, only to have those asphalt improvements be removed under the Forest Main Project. So we intentionally deleted the asphalt work, which was not included in the Forest Main Project, and as a result of that, when the Forest Main Project was completed, we had a need to proceed with the asphalt work.
So what we're really saying is, there are really two points. One, we would have wasted public money in the Pathway to Progress project by doing something, a surfacing of that area and then tearing it up again. So that would have been the first problem. And the second problem would have been that we would have inconvenienced the people not once but twice. So it made much more sense to do it this way, save money and at the same time not inconvenience the public. So again, normally, I hate change orders as much as anyone up here, including... So again, normally I hate change orders as much as anyone up here, including Councilwoman Jeannie Black, but this is not the typical change order. This was one that was done for the good of the public and for the good of the project that...
It was the right thing to do.
Exactly. Thank you.
Okay, hearing no further discussion, all vote on 15B.
Mr. Chairman, motion passes five, zero. Item 16 is ordinances and resolutions in summary for first reading. Item 16A is an ordinance granting Entergy Louisiana LLC right of way servitude and easement across a portion of parcel Y, Kenner Project Subdivision Waste Water Treatment Plant Number Three for construction, maintenance, improvement, repair, and operation of electric power and communication facilities for the Consolidated Sewer District of the City of Kenner. Item 16B is an ordinance amending the 2003-2004 capital budget to reallocate $58,917 from evaluation of levies to code enforcement upgrades slash equipment for the Department of Code Enforcement. Item 16C is an ordinance amending the 2011-2012 and the 2012-2013 capital budget to budget additional funds received by the Parks and Recreation Department dedicated to capital in amount of $45,325 for the Kenner Department of Parks and Recreation. Item 16C, item 16D is an ordinance approving an increase to the authorized expenditure limit for purchases of lights, sirens, accessories, and installation utilizing State Contract Number 408186 through Vehicle Parts and Equipment Company Incorporated doing business as Headquarters 911 to an amount not to exceed $105,000 annually. Item 16E is an ordinance approving an agreement with Meyer Engineers LTD in an amount not to exceed $200,000 for professional services associated with the review of Lewis Armstrong New Orleans International Airport expansion projects for compliance with applicable City of Kenner ordinances. Item 16F is an ordinance authorizing the acceptance of the lowest responsive bid of subterranean construction LLC received on February 4, 2014 under seal bid number 13-6189 in the amount of $882,790 for the construction of drainage improvements to University City and Audubon Place subdivision areas, Phase 1 Hooper, Glan, and Majority Drives and the intersection of Millsap Place Two Lane Drive, State Project Number H.010107, City of Kenner Project Number 2012-001DR. Item 16G is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received for the removal of 19 windows and fabrication and installation of 19 new windows for the first floor of the City Hall Building B in accordance with letter bid number 14-1512 for the Department of Public Works. Item 16H is an ordinance accepting the responsive bid received from Gil's Carpet Sales Incorporated in the amount of $6,250 to furnish and install Guaritile at Woodlake Gymnasium in accordance with letter bid number 14-1509 for the Department of Parks and Recreation. Item 17 is reports from the council and our special committees.
Let's see. Councilman Stagni, you have the floor at this time.
Thank you, Ma'am, Mr. President. I'm going to direct this to Ms. Newton. We've had several conversations in the past about complaints going into Romelli and Romelli addressing those complaints for garbage cans that have been damaged. And I've gotten several calls from residents who say that they have called for months upon months and they're not getting their cans repaired or replaced. Are we tracking? Let me ask you this. Does my assistant send you a copy of the complaint when we send it into Romelli? Are you? You would have gotten several in the last two days, three days?
Then no.
No? Okay.
But it's possible Kathy and Alicia both maintain a log, a spreadsheet of the complaints and I have requested that all of the assistants in the council office copy them since they are the ones responsible for tracking.
Okay, I'm, we're going to, my assistant comes back Monday, I'm going to make sure that you guys have a copy of it. If we can't get service as it's supposed to be under the contract, I'd like Mr. Romelli or representative to come to the meeting. Some of these residents have called for months and months and now, I know at least this office and maybe some other offices are calling and they are taking a little bit longer than they should to make these replacements. And a lot of these problems, these damaged cans are occurring, one, they've been out there a while, but two, it's happening with their own garbage people picking up the cans.
Well, I can tell you that some complaints that we receive when we're, when our office is finally notified, it's after they've complained in other areas. We've specifically asked that any complaint, as soon as it comes in, that we can be notified so we can track it from the beginning.
Well, but even under the contract, what, they have 48 hours?
I believe that's correct.
Okay. All right, I'm going to send that to you on Monday. I know we have several pending requests and I've gotten a frustrating phone call recently that not only did they contact them for months, we contacted them and there's not been action on it. And when I've contacted Mr. Romelli himself, action is taken, but that, you know, not everybody's going to do that and everybody has a time to do that. And we need to try to hold them to what they signed the contract under. So I'll get that to you and I'd appreciate it.
Okay.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir. The next item is item 18, new business. We have none.
Oh, I didn't see there.
That's okay. There you go.
Mr. Carroll, you have the floor at this time.
Thank you, Mr. President. As we all know, over the past weekend, the City of New Orleans and the Greater New Orleans area was inundated with people from all over the world for the NBA All-Star game. It was not only in New Orleans, but there also were activities in the City of Kenner and for all of us basketball junkies and especially for the young men in the back from the City of Kenner's 13 and 14-year-old All-Stars, I'm sure they appreciated the game. But also, the City of Kenner was lucky enough or blessed to receive basketball equipment from an organization, from a couple of organizations. The first being the Urban Lead of the Greater New Orleans Area by Mr. Rick Thomas, the president. Also by Miller Coors, by Mr. Steve Canal, the Community Commerce Partnership Manager, and also the NBA. And the playgrounds that received their equipment were the Bush Dwyne Playground, the Buddy Lawson Playground, the Susan Park Playground, and the Lincoln Manor Playground. They received basketballs, they received jerseys, they received other equipment related to basketball. And it was a good event. The Recreation Administration showed up to support and a number of playground coaches and parents showed up to show support, our appreciation for it. I also would like to thank Mayor Yeney for coming and to speaking, giving a few words, also for Councilman Stagni for being there. But these are the type of cooperations or partnerships that the City of Kenner have been part of and will continue to be part of. Also, I'd like to thank Ms. Donna Han from the mayor's office, who always comes and supports the City of Kenner and my office with things like this when it comes up. So Donna, thanks again for all your support. We appreciate your expertise and your ability to engage with people coming from all over to show that the City of Kenner is an engaging place to participate. So on behalf of all of the children at these playgrounds, we received an abundance of equipment. We are thankful for it. We look forward to continuing our relationship with the Urban Lead, with Miller Coors, and with the NBA for years to come. Thanks again, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Carroll. Okay, seeing no other discussions on 18.
Item 18 is new business. We have nothing. Item 19 is unfinished business and our motions to reconsider or remove from the table positions. We have none. Item 20 is persons wishing to address the council on special subject matters.
We do have a couple. Mr. Almorella, you know the story.
Almorella, 4260 East Loyola Drive, 5th District, 42 years. I got a response for some comments that was made in here at the last council meeting. See, Jeannie Black, Councilwoman Black is not here tonight, so I'll defer those, that response for her to the next meeting. The next response was a comment made, and let me just say this here, this is concerning Mr. Zee Wee. Now, I believe Mr. Zee Wee is an asset to this community. I consider him as an asset to this community. But I do want to clarify one thing that was said. No, I do not like to argue, okay? Quite the contrary. It's unfortunate that sometimes people can't deal with the truth. So it results sometimes in an argument. And when it does, I'm ready for that argument. Anybody got any comments, any questions for me? Thank you.
No, Mr. Carroll, thank you. Terry White, is Terry White still here? All right, moving down. James Sutherland. Doesn't look like he's outside. Okay, we'll give him a few minutes to come in. Natalie, you had your light on, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to remind the public, on Monday, March 3rd, we will be holding a free celebration for Lundigraw in Rivertown with music from Groovy 7, 7:30 a.m. to 3:00 p.m.
Could you repeat that just one more time?
March the 3rd, Lundigraw Celebration in Rivertown, music from 10 a.m. I was just corrected by my line.
Okay. That's why I was asking you to repeat it. I was trying to protect you there a little bit, Natalie.
I'm human, I make mistakes. Um... To 3:00 p.m., Donna?
10 to 3?
10 to 3, yes. 10 to 3 in Rivertown and Argus and Zulu will meet, will have a toast, and we hope people will join us.
You know, that is a fantastic event that the City of Kenner hosts. It's, it's got a lot of character, it's got a lot of flair. You have the two of the, and two old parades and, you know, meeting at Rivertown and it's very festive. And I tell you, they do play, they do place that in, you know, high order in their organizations. Mayor, do you want to say anything about?
Mike?
Don't think so.
Lundigraw?
I do it all the time. No, we're talking about the Lundigraw in the City of Kenner and it's such a phenomenal event and it's just something that Natalie was touching on, but just the, you know, the costumes and the, and just the, you know, the regalia and just that happens there, it's quite special to Kenner.
We put out a word to the, to the Zulu Witch Doctor. We need him to do some rain dancing after last year, that was not fun. And, you know, the prior three or four, five years we've had it, you know, in the past couple administrations, it's been beautiful days, like, you know, breezy and sunny. So we certainly hope that the Witch Doctor does his thing this year and Argus can properly meet Zulu out in the streets and we can have a little street parade. And I think, Donna, Groovy 7?
Yes.
Groovy 7, great, great band, great local band. They do a great job. They play a lot of big Lundigraw events, both inside and outside events, and do a great job. So I think they could be a big draw for Lundigraw and it's a, it's a great draw to Rivertown.
Right, thank you. It's one of those events that make Kenner special, no doubt. Okay, I'm going to ask Mr. James Sutherland to approach the podium at this time. Okay, if you could both state your name and address for the record at this time?
Yes, sir. My name is Terry White and I reside at 112 Cooper Street in Kenner.
Okay, Mr. Sutherland?
James Sutherland, 138 Kilgore Place, Kenner.
Great.
Yes, sir. We were talking outside with the mayor and Ken over the Recreation Department and we got all our grievances worked out, so thank you.
No, come on, man, I've got two more minutes to hear you. Nobody here wants to go home early?
We, sir, we got it all worked out, but we thank you for your time and effort, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, first of all, I tell you what, I would like to see the kids in the back of the room to come to the front, please, so the cameras can get good pictures of y'all. This is our 13, 14-year-old All-Stars that actually came back from a tournament in Slidell and we whooped up on them, huh, guys? Yeah.
As of this moment, we are undefeated.
Undefeated, yeah, there you go.
We've been in two tournaments right now.
I tell you what, why don't we, we don't have the cameras, so we're going to invite you back for, you know, a Kodak moment, okay?
Sure, that's fine.
But, I mean, if each of the kids would like to come up and just, and to state their name, if they have any experiences, you know, at these tournaments, they want to share a minute or two with us, that's fine, but come on up, guys. We really are proud of you guys.
I'm Colin Diaz.
What'd you like about the tournament?
Have fun.
How many points did you score?
Probably about 12.
That's good. Good job. Don't be bashful.
Zion Hunt.
Great, great. So what was your thing, the best thing you liked about the tournament?
To get in the game and have fun and play a role and beat other teams.
That's good. Thank you.
Eugene Barnes.
Eugene, what's going on? What'd you like about the tournament?
Everything.
Everything? Was the food good? Popcorn, hot dogs?
Yeah.
Okay. No, 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 you cannot come to the mic. Nope, you're not allowed.
My name is Ivory Scott and I like...
Now Ivory, did I, did I not coach your mom?
You did.
Right. That shows you how long it's been. Great. How's mom and dad doing? Everybody doing good?
Yeah.
How'd you like, what'd you like about the tournament?
I don't know.
You score any points?
Yeah.
Got some rebounds?
A lot.
Who shot a three-pointer? I got two hands, there we go, all right. Thank you, my friend. Say hello to mom for me.
Come on, guys. Don't be shy.
I'm Zachary Sutherland.
What position you play?
Small forward.
What?
Small forward.
Small forward, okay. Did you shot some points?
Yes, sir.
How'd you do?
Good.
Good. What was the hardest team y'all played against up in Slidell?
Saint Bernard.
Saint Dominix, who?
Saint Bernard.
Saint Martins, okay.
Saint Bernard.
Oh, Saint Bernard, okay. All right. Thank you.
My name is Terry Collins.
What'd you like about the tournament?
Playing the game.
Good. Was it tough?
Not really.
Oh, you're that good, huh? I hope you are. Yes, sir.
My name is David Andrews.
And how'd you like, how'd you like the tournament?
I liked it pretty much. It was a small tournament, though, they only had three teams.
But you got some good experience out of it, didn't you?
Yeah.
What position you play?
Shooting guard.
Shooting guard, so you got the points?
Most of them.
You didn't do any three-pointers?
No.
Oh, most of the points, guys, you hear this? He got most of the points for your team. I'm teasing you. Thank you, son. All right, oh, wait, wait, I got, I got, I got Gregory Carroll, I got the mayor that wants to talk. Go ahead, Gregory.
Thank you, Mr. President. And again, you know, thank Mr. Mayor and the administration for working out any of the concerns that the parents and the coaches may have had. Like I always said, the City of Kenner has the best Recreation Department in the entire state. And the only information we didn't get from the players were what playground they represent. And I, in fact, I know for sure, someone from Wentwood, Buddy Lawson...
Susan Park?
Susan Park.
Galatas.
Galatas. So, so kudos, kudos to all the coaches from all these playground, all of the parents and everybody that supports the Kenner Recreation Department.
Boys, stop for one second, the mayor wants to talk to you, too.
Oh, I, I just wanted to address something that was earlier. Y'all can hear this because unfortunately KTV wasn't there to cover this and I don't know why we dropped the ball on that, but I heard y'all mention about what the Urban League did for us down at Bush Dwyne.